Okay, we're just coming back from closed session. City Attorney?
Mayor, members of the City Council, I understand there's no reportable action.
Roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Beard, Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes. I'd like to invite everybody to rise and ask Mr. Okiriki to offer us the invocation and ask Ms. Baylor to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Okay, we thank you a lot for the ability to be involved in the useful work of our great city, Garden Grove. You have enabled us to serve our community, each in our own different way, help us to see each other's service as complementary, give us the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement in decisions we face today. We assist things in gratitude and confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
If we can put our hands over the line, hand over our heart and face our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple presentations tonight.
Yes, our first presentation is a community spotlight recognizing 2016 Orange County Youth of the Year Award recipients, and Kingsley Okiriki has that presentation.
Okay, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize four Garden Grove best and brightest who have earned the distinguished Youth of the Year Award for 2016 from the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. Since 1947, the Boys and Girls Clubs of America have recognized members for their outstanding service to the club, the community, and their academic success. This year's Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove 2016 Youth of the Year recipients are Alexander Lopez. Can you come forward? And Esmeralda Talavera. I'll start with Alexander Lopez. Alexandra is a student at the Steven R. Fitz Branch and a two-year member at the club. This eighth grader attends leadership and youth conferences to better understand her community and to find ways to prevent bullying. In the future, Alexandra hopes to attend Harvard University and major in architecture, engineering, or law. Hugo Perez. Hugo is a student at the Russell Elementary Branch and a dedicated four-year member. When asked how the club helped him succeed, he said, quote, "The club has taught me how to be a leader and how my choices affect others and their future." Hugo hopes to graduate from Harvard one day or UCLA and help those in need. Ethan Sheffert. Ethan is a student at the Men Branch and a four-year member at the club. His favorite club memory is when he performed on his guitar at the city's Christmas tree lighting and the school district office. In the future, Ethan hopes to become a professional guitarist and travel the world. And next, Esmeralda Talavera. Esmeralda recently graduated from Los Alamos, Los Amigos, excuse me, Los Amigos High School. She's been a member of the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove for four years. Esmeralda was chosen out of 6,500 youth to represent Garden Grove in the countywide Youth of the Year, where she competed with 16 other clubs in Orange County. She is the first Garden Grove member to earn the Orange County Youth of the Year Award in over 15 years. Esmeralda will be attending Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising, where she plans to become a fashion designer and create a nonprofit organization to donate clothes and hygiene packages to those in need around the world. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these outstanding local youth with a gift in appreciation and recognition of their influential roles to their boys and girls clubs. Congratulations to all of you.
We're going to have a group picture?
Three, two, one. Thank you.
I wasn't blocking Chris, was I? Chris, was I blocking you in the photo? I hope I wasn't blocking you in the photo. Okay. I know we have Councilmember Chris Van on video here. Okay, one more presentation?
Yes, we have a presentation recognizing of city employee John Jenkins, and Kingsley Okiriki is here to give that presentation as well. He doesn't have the presentation?
Yes, so I'll, who am I presenting to?
To his family right up here.
Oh, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. You know, the City Council has a resolution of commendation for John Jenkins, and John was born February 26, 1931, and left us July 9, 2016. Whereas John began his remarkable 51-year career with the city of Garden Grove on October 11, 1962, in the newly formed Recreation Division, becoming one of the first recreation leaders in a community services department earning $2 an hour. And whereas with a respected work history as a physical education teacher at Jordan Middle School, John transitioned not only his knowledge and skills to the city, but also his passion and commitment to serving residents and mentoring youth. And whereas working in almost every capacity within a community services department, John found his niche in the adult softball program, serving primarily as the onsite field supervisor for the last 15 years of his city career. And whereas a man of compelling integrity, selflessness, and dedication to hard work, John always went out of his way to make people feel special and fondly remembered by the generations he touched as a PE teacher, Mr. Jenkins. And whereas on September 25, 2013, John Jenkins retired from the city of Garden Grove with all the honors deserving of an incredible 51-year of esteemed service to the community, with plans to spend his retirement years alongside his wife, Lou Jean, their children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And whereas on July 9, 2016, John Jenkins found his eternal resting place among the many fond memories of the times, places, and people he left behind in his most beloved community of Garden Grove. So now, therefore be it resolved that the city of Garden Grove pays homage to one of its own who served this community with the utmost sense of dignity, pride, and care until his passing. The city of Garden Grove and the Garden Grove community will forever be in his debt. So I'd like to present this to the family and have my colleagues join me.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor, for this. My name is Allison, and I was John's youngest child, and I don't know how many employees can say that they loved their job, but my dad loved working for the city of Garden Grove. He got the three of us employed here. We worked part-time, and we learned so much from the family that was the city of Garden Grove and all of the employees and the people at the softball fields, and we coached in ref football and basketball, and it just, I could go on for hours about how much fun we had working here and how much fun my dad had. I would like to tell all of the students that my dad had at Jordan Junior High and all of the people that he touched through the city of Garden Grove that he probably remembers each and every one of them. It was so important for him to have this job, and it meant so much to him. And if I could just say one thing, older employees are a huge benefit to the city. They are the backbone of community service, of not being late, of showing up to work, and it does something for them. Older employees, they need that. They need that purpose in life. And if I could just say one thing that touched my dad is that once he retired, he had a purpose, and it was the city of Garden Grove, and it really meant a lot to him. So I'd just like to say thank you for giving him the opportunity for a long, long time to be employed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stiles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as city manager, obviously, I did not have the pleasure and honor to work with Mr. Jenkins, having been here just so new to the city. But I know that I speak on behalf of literally, I am certain, not just hundreds, but thousands of employees over the years that would have worked with Mr. Jenkins, and I know they would like me to thank you for his service, and really, I just want to say that the city of Garden Grove owes Mr. Jenkins a debt of gratitude for his service to the city, so thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to begin our public comments right now? None of these are for the public hearing, right? Okay, great. Wonderful. Robin Marcario, and then Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, City Council, city staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. I'm the appointed Orange County Mosquito Vector Control District for the city, and I just want to encourage you, if you see mosquitoes in your daily lives, call us. We'll come out and take care of any of those breeding sites. I'm going to say the telephone number several times so that you can get a chance to hear it, (714) 971-2421. You can also follow us on Facebook. It's always kind of fun to see all the little mosquito postings that we put on what's going on. West Nile virus-infected mosquitoes have been reported in 16 cities, including Garden Grove. A few weeks after high levels of infected mosquitoes, we see human cases. The first case is a 60-year-old woman from Anaheim who is currently hospitalized with a serious neuroinvasive form of the West Nile virus. The common mosquito bites at dawn and at dusk, and it can transmit West Nile virus, so protect yourself and your family. Empty all standing water on your property, reduce areas in which mosquitoes may breed, flower pots, pet bowls, those kinds of things, or waters just sitting there stagnant. Make sure your window and door screens are in good condition. Use insect repellent. Limit outdoor activity at dawn and dusk, when they're most prevalent and most active, and wear long-sleeved shirts and long-sleeved pants outdoors. There are two new mosquitoes. One is called the yellow fever mosquito, and the other is the Asian tiger mosquito. Both have stripes and are very vicious day biters. They are capable of transmitting Zika virus, yellow fever, dengue, and other mosquito diseases. These two new mosquitoes prefer containers to lay their eggs, which will have, they kind of lay it on the edge of the rim of the containers, and then when it comes in contact with water, that's when they'll breed. It can be six months later, just these little tiny eggs around the container of your pot. It's unbelievable. So don't share any plants. Don't share little pots and containers with your friend, because you may be, in fact, spreading these mosquito eggs. And so they lay their eggs on the rims of the containers, so if you ever see any of these little striped mosquitoes, call us, (714) 971-2421. We have special strike teams that are responding to any areas where travelers returning from overseas with Zika. One mosquito vector control technician, with your permission, will search the breeding sources and distribute information to you and your neighbors. California has reported 134 associated Zika virus infections in 23 counties. Orange County has 10 cases. Call if you have any green pools and ponds, and we will give you some of the free little fish that eat the mosquito larvae. And Orange County mosquito vector, our primary concern is public health. Any decision that we may have based on aerial spraying would be based on scientific data and the response plan that we have in place. It must also be made by the subcommittee of the district board, consisting of the president, vice presidents, secretary, and as well as the chairs of the different district committees, plus representatives of any area being considered for spraying. Controlling mosquitoes is a shared responsibility. So call us if you see mosquitoes, (714) 971-2421. And I just wanted to kind of give a shout-out to the city staff and the council. You did a fabulous job at the 60th anniversary. It was so much fun, and we created a beautiful mosaic. Also, this Thursday is the last concert in the park, and that will be at East Gate Park at 6:30. It's a classic rock band. And it's also going to be an opportunity for you to help create a community mosaic once again. So add a tile or two to be part of public art, and I'll see you there. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell, and then Raymond Choi, and then Tom Kim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Communities in Orange County have a lot of things that they're proud of, extending all the way down to south of the border into San Diego County. And these communities have special events, like San Juan Capistrano with the Return of the Swallows, Huntington Beach with their Fourth of July Parade, which is the largest west of the Mississippi River, Surf City. Newport Beach has their boat parade. And Garden Grove, we're proud of our strawberry festival. But unfortunately, we are becoming better known for something sitting on Garden Grove Boulevard known as the Rusty Skeleton. I was with a group of friends about a week and a half ago, and one of them, who lives in Huntington Beach, 30 miles away, said, "What is the city going to do about that structure?" He said, "It's a real eyesore." Whenever he goes on the Garden Grove freeway, he notices it. I tried to explain to him that it was all part of a plan to tie in with the Brookers Triangle and all the new building that's going to go on there. But he said he can't understand why the city has let it sit there that long. Well, a lot of the people in Garden Grove feel the same way. Why has the city allowed it to sit there that way for so long? So, and the words, to paraphrase one of our greatest presidents, Ronald Reagan, "Mr. Bowie, Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Fawn, tear down that structure." Thank you.
Oh, I got it. Okay, that's funny. All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilman. My name is Raymond Choi, and I'm a former president of the Chamber of Commerce in Orange County and chairman of the Korean Festival Foundation. I worked for the Korean community so many years, and now we were going to have a Korean festival in City of Garden Grove, but also parade also we requested for it. So I know we had a Korean festival for many years, almost 30 years, we have a Korean festival and parade here in City of Garden Grove. So Korean community also growing with the Korean festival, so we were so proud about it, and we were, you know, having the festival here. But as you know, last four years, we haven't had Korean festival and parade. And now we're going to have this parade and a festival back in the City of Garden Grove. We were so excited about it, and we were working very hard to making our festival and parade very successful. And then City of Garden Grove, with the Korean community in the City of Garden Grove, have a good relationship with making it an all-festival and parade successful. We need your help and your cooperation in making our festival very successful. We're looking forward to see you and the Korean festival and the parade. The one thing personally, my first name, I would like to really appreciate it, and the city staff that make, help us a lot to making our festival back in the City of Garden Grove. Once again, I really appreciate it, and then we will thank you to the City of Garden Grove. We're going to make a very successful the festival and parade this year. Thank you so much.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, my name is Tom Kim. I'm the founder of the Korean Festival in 1981. I'm the founder of that, and we had just continued until 2,000-some years, about 30-some years, and it vanished. And so we are working for that, and also I am the chairman of the Korean American Festival Committee of Orange County, and it's a great honor and privilege to present this time the multicultural festival to the City Council and City of Garden Grove. I'm very excited to have this festival after so many years. I wish this festival promotes businesses in this area and also to help revive the City of Garden Grove. This year, you will enjoy different cultural events, including presentations from Vietnam, Indonesia, Philippines, India, Thailand, Laos, and Cambodia, and also Korean. We invite everyone to come and enjoy the parade, cultural events, including dances,
Food?
Food. Oh, you know that.
That's the most important.
And also meet the people and learn different languages this time. I appreciate all the support from the City of Garden Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we finish all the comments, may I introduce the new president of the Korean Festival Foundation of Orange County?
Sure.
James Joe, could you just say thank you?
Thank you very much, you know, City of Garden Grove and the councilmen and the mayors. We try very hard now, so we're almost done. So we do try to my best, make a good city, better place in Garden Grove. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We all have to be a part of making it a better place. Harry Tram?
Good evening, City Council and Mayor and everyone in this room. I would like to sign up, you know, regarding about my case for the carport required to move in five feet before. So I have been, came here, it's around like two months ago, and after that, I have, you know, two officers, they said to me, Lisa Kim, and they said, "If just in case, they didn't call me around like after three days, and then I will contact with them." So after three days, I didn't hear they call me at all, and I tried to call them for the next day, and then I leave a message because no one there. And then the second day, I tried to call again, but I didn't hear anyone answer the phone, and then I leave a message again, but I didn't hear. And until now, I don't know what I'm going to do, and I would like to know, you know, the updates of my case about my carport. It's been set up from 1997 until now, and then I received the letter from the code enforcement asking me need to remove it in five feet. But, you know, if I remove it, it mean I need to tear it out, and that's when we broke, because we don't have enough room over there. So that's why how come I would like to ask the City Council help me about that, because it's been set up. I bought in Hobby Po a long time ago, you know, and I set up, it's, I don't know, because my yard just about that size, and I had a picture, I have it right here. So this one, and then it's my white car and my dollar car, and if I'm moving in, I don't know where I'm moving in. Maybe I be able to moving into my front of my garage, if like that, I, you know, I will moving that in, you know, so.
Thank you. Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Mayor, we will, I'll get with the staff outside the hallway, and we'll have someone meet with him to make sure that we're on the same page and talking about the same issues.
Okay, great. Mr. Harry Tram, just hang tight. We'll have a staff member out here in a second to speak with you. We're going to move on with the meeting. There are no more public comments at this time. You know, let's do the successor agency later. We're going to move right into our consent items here. We have items from A through N, and I'll entertain a motion for that. I move the motion. Second? Further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard? Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
And we're going to go to our public hearings right now. Five A.
Yes, five A's Public Hearing is Extension of Urgency Ordinance Number Two Eight Six Nine imposing a moratorium on the approval of mortuaries and crematoriums pursuant to Government Code Section Six Five Eight Five Eight.
Thank you.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, before you, it's an ordinance that would extend the current moratorium that was adopted approximately forty days ago. Uh, it would extend it for ten months and fifteen days for a total of one year. Uh, the moratorium prevents the issuance of permits for crematoriums and also mortuaries. Uh, during the one-year period, well, now ten-month period, we will be processing regulations before Planning Commission and then eventually City Council. We need that time to be able to comply with all the code requirements for public hearings and go into Planning Commission and then coming before City Council. So, uh, the, the code requires a public hearing for the extension of ten months and fifteen days. So at this time, uh, staff recommends that the City Council open the public hearing, hear testimony. And then after you close the public hearing, you, um, adopt the ordinance. It would be an urgency ordinance, be effective immediately upon adoption. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. At this time, I'm opening up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing that, I'm closing the public hearing. Colleagues, any further questions for staff? No? I'll entertain a motion for this. Five A.
Move it.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard. Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Phan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you. Five B.
Yes, five P is Approval of the Two Thousand Sixteen Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report. And Bill Murray is here for that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor, Mister Mayor, Member of the Council. The Safe Drinking Water Act of nineteen seventy-four was put in place to protect the public by ensuring that water agencies provided clean, safe drinking water. One of the provisions of the act is for the water agencies to communicate the levels of harmful contaminants in their water. The city does this annually and the results are published in the Water Quality Report, which is available on the city's website. Additionally, the state requires a separate report to discuss water contaminants that exceed the water quality goals set by the state. This is the Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report that is before council tonight. The report is designed to alert water, water agencies to possible problems developing within their water system. And while the report does identify the presence of some harmful contaminants, their levels are very low. Make no mistake about it, Garden Grove's water is in full compliance with all enforceable standards. And, you know, I need to make that clear. The report does identify several harmful contaminants that include arsenic and uranium, which are naturally occurring, and other contaminants that are byproducts of the disinfection process. It is important for these contaminants to be identified and monitored. As an increase in any of them may trigger the, the need for the city to, to treat the water, to remove them. In general, though, the cost to treat these contaminants is very expensive, which is why we're not already doing that. By law, the Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report must be adopted by the City Council. To adopt a plan, the council must first conduct a public hearing, then approve the report as it's submitted. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. I'm opening up the public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter? And we have no cards. Hearing and seeing that, I'm closing the public hearing. Colleagues, any questions for staff? No? Okay, great. By the way, I, I drink our tap water in Garden Grove. Just want everyone to know that. All right. Is there a motion on this item?
Move the motion.
Or second.
We're approving this report here. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard. Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Phan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
We're gonna take a quick recess.
I'll call this back to order for the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Yes, Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Winn?
Yes.
Member Fawn? Vice Chair Beard? Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communication simultaneously with City Council. We'll go on to consent items, basically just receive and file the minutes. And also approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Call to vote.
I can really do it this way now.
Okay. Okay, call to vote.
Motion received three yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? CNN, we will adjourn back to City Council.
Okay, back to City Council. Six A, and I received the email, really nice email, an application from, is it pronounced Arton? Do we know? Is he here? Arton Barron. And I'd like to ask my colleagues to join me in making this appointment of Arton Barron to the Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission. Okay, so I'm moving this appointment.
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Okay, please vote.
Motion received three yes votes.
Great, seven A.
Seven A is award contract to Astro Builders for the Garden Grove Community Meeting Center Council Chamber renovation. And, oh, Janet's here for that. Janet Palio is here for that report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. On June 29, the city issued an invitation for bids for the renovation of the council chamber. Four bids were received and opened on July 29. And staff has reviewed all bid documents submitted by the lowest bidder, Astro Builders Incorporated, with a total base bid of $417,500, and found the bid to be responsive. This improvement is included in the community services capital improvement budget and is funded through the Park and Louvre Fee Fund as well as the General Fund. There are sufficient funds budgeted to cover this base bid. Staff recommends that the City Council award the contract for the renovation of the Garden Grove Community Meeting Center Council Chamber to Astro Builders Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $417,500. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer them.
Have we worked with them before?
No.
Okay. Not to exceed that amount. You know, you know how weary I am of change orders, right? So we just gotta be very careful there.
Well, there are provisions. It's not a not to exceed contract, but the actual construction management will be done by the public works staff. And as much as you're worried about change orders, we're worried about it more.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
What's the timeline?
Well, we need to be open by the first of the year in order to seat our new council members. Actually, we're going to seat them in December.
Right, so right now, we're looking at projects, we're projecting that we'll be under preconstruction sometime in mid-September, early October. And so at that time, the council meetings will be moved to the A Room. And we'll be there for about a period of two and a half months. Our goal is to try to have this renovation completed by early December. However, you know, if we run into any, any kind of issues, it may delay us, but our goal is to complete before the end of the year.
Wow, okay.
And what are they gonna do? Is it gonna be roughly the same configuration that we have, but a redo, or is it?
I don't have a rendering with me tonight, but it is pretty much the same configuration, except for all the ADA compliance changes. There will be a ramp added to the dais, as well as staff seating where we're at here will be ground level. And we will be also eliminating some of the public seating in order to add spaces for ADA.
Okay. Exciting.
Anything else?
Yeah, we're doing this because we're gonna add two more council members. That's gonna be a nice, interesting change as well. Okay. Do I have a motion for this?
I'll move it.
Second it.
Please vote.
Motion received three yes votes.
Okay, thank you, seven B.
Yes, seven B is approval of maintaining the municipal code requirements for front yard landscaping and paving. And Allison Mills is here for that report.
Great.
Good evening, Council. At the April 26, 2016 council meeting, at the request of Councilman Bowie, I presented information on the code requirements for front yard paving and landscaping. This request was in response to concerns about the current drought conditions and water usage. During that meeting, staff was directed to suspend the enforcement of Garden Grove Municipal Code Section 9.08.040.050-J, which requires all unpaved areas to contain plant material and may also include approved dry decorative landscape material. Council further directed staff to take other action to amend or modify the minimum landscape percentage in the front yard area. Three municipal code sections address front yard landscaping requirements. Section 9.08.040.050-D1 requires that the maximum permitted percentage of hardscape in the front yard shall be no more than 50%. Section 9.08.030-G requires that landscaping shall cover no less than 50% of the required front yard. And Section 9.08.040.050-J requires that all unpaved areas be planted with an effective combination of trees, grass, berms, ground cover, lawn, shrubbery, and/or approved dry decorative landscape materials. Staff surveyed neighboring cities to determine the minimum amount of required front landscaping of our surrounding cities. The neighboring cities have front yard landscape requirements that are very similar to our own. Tonight, staff recommends that no change be made to the maximum amount of hardscape or the minimum amount of landscape required in the front yard, as these codes are consistent with our neighboring cities and will provide for a pleasing neighborhood aesthetic. Staff further recommends that we make no amendment to Garden Grove Municipal Code Section 9.08.040.050-J, but to interpret this section to allow dry decorative materials such as crushed stone or pavers without also requiring some sort of plant material. This direction could be revisited at the conclusion of our current water emergency or at council's discretion. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
Yeah, I am just curious, do we know why Westminster have only 15%? It seemed to be very different from other, other cities such as Santana and Garden Grove.
I don't know what their reasoning behind the 15% requirement is.
Okay, and then secondly, the reason I bring this up is there seem to be a lot of resident that have used, you know, crushed rock that they claim would be good for conserving water, as well as when the rain fall, the water will bring the mineral from the rock into the, you know, underground waters. And that, that is a good things for the environment. And my question is if there are a lot of resident already using that, how are we going to, you know, are we going to require to, you know, make them take all of those thing out? Because it seem to me they are very concerned because it cost them a lot of money to, to correct those situation.
Well, the code as written, and as we have been enforcing it prior to your direction in April, was if there is decorative rock, pavers, that we would also require some sort of plant material in addition to the dry decorative landscaping.
Mm-hmm. And how much? So moving forward, how much are we going to require some, some plants if they choose, you know, to use rock or, you know, munch?
Well, that would be at your direction. We are seeing lots of people that have no plant material that want to just have either crushed rock or pavers.
Okay, thank you.
So I see recommendation from staff here. So no change to the one ending D1 and G. And to interpret the one ending J. To allow trees, grass, berms, ground cover, lawn, shrubbery, or dry decorative landscape material in the required front yard landscaping area, and not require a combination of any of those materials. So those homes that currently have just crushed stone or pavers are okay. Correct?
Well, they could be if that is the direction you give us.
That's, that's what you wanted, right, Mr. Bowie? Okay.
Okay.
Did you wanna move that?
Does it read correctly the way you're?
There's no way. I think, I think if it's just 100% crushed rock, I think is too much, because there might be other resident who be concerned with it. So I would like to change the language a little bit with, because I would not feel comfortable with allowing 100% of crushed rock in the front, because I think some resident might be, might be, you know, might think that is a little bit too far. But I certainly do not want it to be, you know, more than 50, you know, 50% crushed rock and 50% plant. So somehow between that, I think, I think should be, should be, should be a better arrangement. Perhaps 20% plant material and, 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 you know, or perhaps you should phrase it as no more than 80% crushed rock.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, of the required 50% front yard that needs to be landscaping, 80% of that can be crushed rock and 20% can be plant material?
Yes.
Okay.
Something along the line. I would feel more comfortable with, with supporting that type of court amendment.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Just real quick, what is our enforcement, code enforcement on these? How often do we enforce on this?
We enforce this on a complaint basis.
Okay.
So when we receive complaints, we go out and address it.
Okay. Great. So you're getting all my forwarded complaints to you, right?
We do.
Okay, good. Also, quick question on AstroTurf. What is our current policy on that?
There are code requirements. There's code require, it's enforced in planning, so I don't know exactly, but I do know that there are requirements as far as the type of material and the installation of the material, the underlayment.
Okay, okay, good. So as always prudent to check with the city first, since we're on the first floor of City Hall. Come in and check in on us to let us know what your plans are, and we can assist you to do it right the first time. So, you know, we won't have to investigate any complaints and ask you to correct some things, right?
Right, always better to ask us. We're happy to help and guide you in the right direction.
Yes, thank you. All right, so I am gonna take that motion to adopt as recommended, except for the percentage that Mr. Bowie stated, and that was no more than 80% crushed rock. And no less than 20% actual.
My understanding was of the 50% that's required to be landscaped, 80, no more than 80% of that can be dry decorative material, crushed rock or pavers, and no less than 20% can be plant material.
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, great, great. As a move by Mr. Bowie, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? When does this take effect?
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll see. We have to vote first. Okay, please vote.
Motion received three yes votes.
Okay, great, thank you. Seven C.
Seven C is introduction and first reading of ordinance amending Section 8.40.050 of the municipal code relating to intoxicating beverages within city parks.
Mayor, members of the City Council, before you is an ordinance for introduction that would amend the municipal code to clarify that intoxicating beverages can be had at public places and city parks with the permission of the city manager. Currently, there is an inconsistency in the code in that one section does allow it when it talks about public places and public facilities, but when it speaks specifically about public parks, it absolutely prohibits any alcoholic beverages. So in order to make the code consistent on the two different chapters, we are recommending that the City Council introduce the ordinance before you, which is an ordinance of the City Council amending Section 8.40.050 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to intoxicated, intoxicating beverages within city parks. And again, the amendment would be to permit intoxicating beverages subject to the city manager permit, and also subject to the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control Regulations. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received three yes votes.
Great, thank you. Matters from council, we can start with colleagues. Mr. Bowie?
I don't have any.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I don't have anything either.
Okay. Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't know if you were going to mention this, but I was just gonna remind the public that I believe our second meeting of this month has been canceled. So the next meeting of the City Council will be September 13, I believe. You heard earlier that in the meantime, I will mention August 11. We do have our concert in the park at East Gate Park this Thursday evening. And then I will also mention for all the, all the movie buffs, we will be showing Minions on Village Green Park on August 17 at 8:00 PM. So this will be the second movie that I think we've had after the Star Wars movie on Main Street. So August 17, you wanna come out and bring kids and watch Minions? That'll be at 8:00 PM on August 17.
Great, thank you. Are you gonna take your daughters out there to watch Minions? I'm putting you on the spot.
I've already received that request, yes.
I'm lobbying for your girls, okay. Did you talk to or have someone contact Harry Tramm from earlier?
Yes, I saw our planning staff meet with him right after he spoke, so I think they've already been in touch with him.
Okay, great. That's it. I don't have anything in addition. Just wanna wish everybody a good night. Think we're gonna be able to see the sunset. No, it just, that's passed. That's passed already. Good night, everybody.